A Supertalk Mississippi Media Production. Pike County, here comes your morning show. Dave in the Morning on ninety-three point five FM, Supertalk Mississippi.
So now, understand, you're not going to dictate to me what I do and what I don't do, but I'm still the mayor, Mr. Trump.
None of this news is recorded, none is signed and reported, correct?
No, it's recorded, I'm being accused.
And it's not that.
Said I want to make it on record, I want the allegations in writing, parties accused are on recording of this arrest.
And now, here's your host, Dave Hughes.
Good morning to you, how you doing? How's it going Tuesday morning, beautiful sunny skies, a gorgeous day? Et cetera, so forth and so on. As usual, a little bit of everything to talk about this morning. We have the agenda for tonight's work session as in the Macomb City Board we'll take a peek at. Spoilers, nothing amazingly shocking on there. Talk about that in a bit. We need a billboard campaign in Pike County. We need a billboard, white background, big black block letters like an Arial font or something that just says, I fifty-five, just don't. Or possibly, well, that's the perfect billboard campaign because, you know, it's three words. You can make them big, they're easy to see, easy to absorb as you're driving down the road, barreling north or south on I fifty-five in Pike County at a screaming two and a half miles an hour. But we could do additional supplementary advertising around that. Friends don't let friends get on I fifty-five. It seems like every day, we have two or three times a day over the last week or so, that it's just not a good idea to even touch the interstate. Now, we had a holiday, admittedly, we've had a lot of people out on the road, but it's not good in general. I don't know if you saw, saw this yesterday, the Delaware exit. Here's one I don't understand. Now, as we know, they are putting an ill-considered, in my opinion, roundabout in at the I fifty-five summit exit. Where you don't just get off, you got to get off and go round and round and round. The over-under after they get that completed and open it, the over-under for betting purposes, if you'd like to wager on this, of how long it'll be before somebody gets stuck on there and calls nine-one-one because they just keep going around, 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 they can't figure out where to get off. I'm putting it at five days. It's my official story, but anyway, they're doing that at the summit exit, we're all aware of that, we're all thrilled, absolutely tickled pink about it. What are they doing at the Delaware exit that required the removal of all of those oak trees? I don't know if you've seen, we had a beautiful exit there. The trees were a big part of that. I haven't checked yet, I gotta go check. I had mentioned this a couple of weeks ago, what was going to happen with our big, beautiful marble sign that said McComb? Guess we got to rip that up too, right? I don't know. I haven't looked, but the trees, they were taking them down yesterday. At what point are we improving things? When does that start? I think is the question on everyone's mind. Because we're not there yet. Oh, we're not there yet. We had the bridge raising project where they raised all of the I fifty-five bridges, might still be in the process of that, working their way south. And that was a totally logical response to one vehicle in my lifetime hitting the bridge. I'll leave it up to you to decide whether or not that was an overreaction. One vehicle hit one bridge, one time. So we got to tear up everything. But now, we're removing the trees. It had a very, you know, right there at the Delaware exit on I fifty-five, especially going southbound, that little triangle there where that sign is and where all those beautiful oak trees were, it was a very park-like setting. It really was, it was gorgeous. It was welcoming. Now, how many times over the past few years have you and I had a conversation about how important curb appeal is for a municipality? I don't know what the plan is, I don't know what is going on that necessitated the removal of all of those trees. But I eagerly await finding out. I would like to know, because it did the opposite of beautifying it, that's for sure. And, you know, we don't care, progress, trying to improve things. What specific improvement involved removing all of those trees? That's the question a lot of people have on their mind when they find out about this or when they see it. So we will eagerly await someone finally deciding to address it. No, we have no timeline for when that's going to be, how long it's going to take. But we, all we can do is hold on to hope that someone will decide, well, let's tell them what's going on here. We'll see. As you can tell, I'm filled with hope, it'll be fine. A little breaking news this morning, right, not too long before we came on the air here, the leader of South Korea, President Yoon Suk-yol. It was revealed that he went on South Korean television and announced he had no choice but declare, to declare emergency martial law in South Korea. Why did he do that? Well, they stated reason, he said that opposition parties have been taking Parliament hostage, sympathizing with North Korea, and trying to throw the country into a crisis. So, he declared martial law. Now, this is, you got to realize, as we talk about this kind of thing, South Korea is, it's kind of simple to say it's a different place, but it is incredibly intelligent people, a lot of tech business in South Korea, a lot. This is not even the first time they've done this, I think it was, what, about fifty years ago? They declared emergency martial law in South Korea for basically the same reasons. In his televised address, President, and I'm going to say his name again just because, well, it's fun, President Yoon Suk-yol. Yes, I know I'm mangling the pronunciation. I'm a boy from southwest Mississippi, that's better than you probably should have expected. Anyway, in his televised address to the nation, the president vowed to eradicate pro-North Korean forces and protect the constitutional democratic order. Now, let me ask you something. Just because I find this relevant. Do you recall anybody else, any other country, any situation where recently we had to get one specific result politically or we would destroy democracy as we know it? We have to protect democracy, we have to make sure we take care of our democracy. This sounds kind of familiar in a way. It's not the same thing, but boy, does it have that same ring to it, doesn't it? So he's just flat out declared martial law to protect democracy. Two questions that brings up. Number one, how did we manage to avoid that happening here in America? Number two, we still have until January twentieth. Don't get too comfortable quite yet. No, I'm not trying to be an alarmist, I'm just pointing out some interesting things based off of current events. The Parliament Building in South Korea has been closed down. Members of the Parliament in South Korea are now blocked from entering the building. They have protesters. People climbing over the gates, people raising heck. South Korean Democratic Party Chair Lee Jae Myung said there's a high possibility the military will be mobilized to arrest members of the National Assembly, their Parliament, their Congress. That is the current situation as you and I sit here and talk in South Korea. I've dealt with people in South Korea before, it is a different culture, it is a different place. I just find it interesting, the parallels between South Korea and admittedly, you have North Korea looming over your head twenty-four-seven. I mean, they have North Korea, we have Canada, I think we're in better shape there. Over there, you've got crazy short man, Kim Jong-un, who could do anything at any moment. Here, we've got Justin Trudeau, who flies down to Mar-a-Lago and says, Mr. President, please don't, please don't give us a tariff, thank you. Did you hear what Trump said back to Justin Trudeau when he was talking about how tariffs would bankrupt Canada and severely affect the economy in the US? Well, reportedly, Trump's response to that was, well, if you can't survive without ripping us off on prices, maybe we should annex you and Canada should become the fifty-first state and you can be governor. He said that to him. So we keep an eye on the situation in South Korea. Got to love it, absolutely enjoy it. When everything's all higgledy-piggledy, don't we? Well, we must, we keep getting it there. Don't get me started on pardon-related stuff, but we have time, we'll dip into that, but when we come back, we have the agenda for tonight's work session of the Macomb City Board of Mayor and Selectmen. Had some more gunplay yesterday. In other words, it was a day that ends in Y in the city of Macomb, talk about that. And, did you get the special meal prepared? Maybe make some nice desserts to hand out to our new alien overlords today as supposedly the day, right, according to that prediction? The aliens are invading. Yeah, they'll turn around, they'll go home, they'll touchdown, open the door, look around and go, oh no, no thank you, now we're out, and then get back in their spaceship and they're gone. Work session agenda up next.
Feeling fancy, feeling festive? You can do both this Thursday at Selman's Jewelers. Come see a showcase of pre-owned high-end watches, including pre-owned Rolexes, taste high-end bourbons, and make holiday wish lists. We can't wait to see you this Thursday from five to eight, Selman's Jewelers, thirteen-eleven Delaware Avenue, McComb, your family-owned and operated jewelry store since nineteen forty-five.
Welcome back, Supertalk, Mississippi Pike County, ninety-three point five. Tuesday morning, we now officially have that post-holiday weekend Monday behind us. And we can slowly slip back into the mind-numbing grind. Yes, I am full of positive energy today, for some reason, I don't, I don't know. Got a good night's sleep, woke up in a good mood. And then here we are. All right, tonight, we have our first work session of December, our next-to-last work session of twenty-twenty-four, and it's a fairly small one, fairly short one. And let's just take a look at it right now, because there are a couple of good questions people want answers to. We'll see if answers are forthcoming tonight. Item number one on the agenda for the city of Macomb work session is Georgia Etta Wilkinson wants to talk about acquiring a business permit. There are no additional details included, we'll see what that involves. Number two, select woman Terry Waterman-Baylor wants to talk about the NOLA cameras. Now, if you recall, this was a big topic of conversation. Spent a decent amount of money, all of the cameras are monitored by a company down in New Orleans, it's NOLA cameras, it's not a big surprise there. They have all this technology to help fight crime and things like that. Haven't heard much about them in a while. So this is an appropriate set of questions, in my opinion. Select woman Baylor wants to know about the NOLA cameras, she has three questions on the agenda. Number one, I think this is a typo, it says, who mentors them? I believe that's supposed to be monitors, stuff happens, typos happen. The, that's question number one. Question number two, how many crimes have we actually solved with them? That's, that's a good number to put out, I like that, yeah, a little transparency, we need more transparency in everything, I think, so not a bad thing. And then question C, you know, the one that comes after question two. Question C, are they working? When I first read that question on the agenda, my thought was, well, of course they're working. And then I said, well, just kind of making an assumption, I assume they're working. That's a fairly basic question to ask, we'll see. That's the three that are on the agenda, that doesn't mean there won't be additional or follow-up questions once the conversation gets started, that's select woman Baylor wanting to know those things. The, the main list, we had one, two, and C, and it's A, B, and C on the agenda, I'm just having some fun, that was all part of item number two on the agenda. Item number three, the water meter replacement contract, select woman McKenzie wants an update on that. Again, something that has received some discussion, probably not quite as much as the, the crime cameras did, but this has been discussed several numerous times, he wants an update on that, again, yes, very good idea. Item number four, again from select woman McKenzie, an update on water bill and municipal court collections. If you recall, we have an organization we were looking at and bringing on board to help the city track down the people that haven't paid their stuff and get that money, it's a decent amount of money. It's a chunk of change. We can use every penny we can get, so makes sense. Select woman McKenzie just wants an update on it. How are we coming on this? The people who every month keep using water but just never pay the bill, getting anything out of them? The people who owe fines to municipal court, just don't pay them, getting anywhere with that? Two very valid questions. Question number five, an update on the action to correct water billing zero usage accounts. A topic that has, well, it has said, select woman at large Tabitha Felder Isaacoff like an atom bomb every time it's come up. Seems to be a rather personal topic. Which has always brought into my mind this question. Who would qualify to not have to pay their water bill for the city of Macomb if they get water from the city water system? Who is it that legally and justifiably, the public would find out and go, oh yeah, well, no, no, don't make them pay, that's fine. I can think of one name, I can think of one name in Macomb that if we found out they were not having to pay their water bill, everybody would go, well, okay, good, we're fine with that, Ms. Maddie? That's about it. I don't know of anyone that would hear that news and go, I can't believe this, it's a travesty. But outside of her, who you got? If you recall, on these stats on the reports, there were accounts who were showing zero usage, but they were still turned on. Now, is that because they literally aren't using any water or because it's just not being measured? That's the questions at the heart of select woman McKenzie's item on the agenda for tonight's work session. An update on the action to correct water billing zero usage accounts. You either using water or you're not, if you're not, just turn it off. Because as you're aware, whether you're actually using any water or not, there's a baseline charge there. Is that being paid? Next item, item number six, from selectman Mullins. He wants an update, a lot of updates being asked for tonight from across the board. Three different members of the Board of Selectmen wanting updates on things. Selectman Mullins wants an update on the purchase of body cameras for the police department. That's been discussed several times, I know we had some on order at one point, and I'm not sure where that's at myself, so, yeah, get a good update on that. Item number seven, you would not gather the Board of Mayor and Selectmen together for the city of Macomb without discussing an invoice for InfraMark, and sure enough, item number seven is exactly that. InfraMark. Is continuous, I mean, they're providing a service, but, yeah. Item number eight, discussing payment, number three from Twin L Construction, I think that's supposed to be two, but, okay. Number nine, discuss an annexation invoice. Annexation invoice. Find out more about that when we get there tonight. Number ten, two invoices from Neil Schaefer, and then number eleven, the monthly business reviews. And that's it, that's the entire agenda for tonight's work session of the Macomb City Board of Mayor and Selectmen. Lot of discussion, not a lot of discussion revolving around obvious action items that are going to be brought up and placed on the agenda. Unless some of the answers are not what anyone's hoping for in some of those questions. The NOLA cameras, the water bill stuff, water meter replacement and the water bill zero usage collections on that and the municipal court body cameras. Got several questions there that could lead to some action items being placed on the agenda, but we should get some good information out of this, I would think. So, we'll wait and see, five-thirty, as usual. We have the work session. And then we'll move on, Mo's from what I said earlier, and it's true, he did say that. President Trump did tell Justin pretty boy Trudeau, when he went down to Mar-a-Lago and had dinner with Trump, that if Canada can't survive without ripping off the United States, maybe they should just be annexed and become the fifty-first state and Trudeau could be governor. Mo said, big state, yeah? Yeah, it would be impressive. It would officially immediately become the biggest state ever. I mean, it's not going to happen, we all know that. I mean, if we tried, it's entirely possible they'd declare martial law, that appears to be, you know, the, the go-to move today. You know? Saw a post on Facebook. saw a post on Facebook last night. Another report of shots fired around Presley Boulevard. Law enforcement reportedly responded. I love how it's a 10-plus automatic shots fired. Maybe? Go look up, if, if you're bored, if you want to learn something interesting, go look up the world record for the fastest shooting time with a revolver. Just, uh, just go look that up. Go Google it. Chances are good you cannot tell from the noise. And here's why I say that. Jerry McCulick, you can go look this up. 1999, at an event, with a revolver, fired off eight shots in one second. Why do I go down this rabbit hole? And there's plenty of others that you can look at. I'm trying to remember his name. Oh, what was his name? Actually had to have all the tendons in his, in the back of his hand, the top of his hand replaced because he had worn them out pulling the trigger so quickly. But I go down that rabbit hole for this reason. A lot of assumptions are made. 10-plus automatic shots fired. How do you know they were automatic? Did you see what weapon fired them? You can't tell by the sound. You might think you can. But that is at best circumstantial evidence. But we have the usual lineup of people being upset about it. Prayers, a lot of prayers. And I think there's a nuance here that's being missed. Just in general, not just with this particular subject, because it's every day we have some kind of shooting, some kind of problem. We have somehow managed to get into the mindset that you pray to God and he fixes all your problems. No, you pray to God and he helps you fix your problems. He's not a magic sky genie. Who just comes down and makes it all go away. It doesn't work like that. Ask your pastor. Do not take the goofy radio guy's word for this. Please, I beg you. Ask your pastor. But that's everyone's knee-jerk immediate reaction to anything bad going on. We, we, we have to participate at least in solving problems. We're not doing that. We're sitting back waiting for somebody else to solve the problem and then complaining that they're not doing it fast enough to suit us. That's not productive. It's not helpful. And it's not accomplishing anything. As evidence of that statement, that the way we're approaching this is not accomplishing everything, let me wave my arms around in a big general motion to point out everything. That just bothers me. I see it all the time. And it is a, it, it's, it's a bad approach. It's a bad mindset. Now, it's, it's not just shooting. We got plenty of people doing bad things. Robbing houses, scamming, doing all kinds of nonsense. That's not new, by the way. It's a little more prevalent now, but not as much as you think. Because the difference between now and let's say 1990. What, that'd be 30, 35 years ago? The difference in our lifetimes between how much crime there is now and how much there was in 1990. In 1990, if it wasn't in the paper or in the news, you didn't know about it. Now, if three law enforcement vehicles pull into the parking lot at the same restaurant, immediately everyone, everyone broadcast, what's going on? I said, I see three law enfor, oh, my gosh, what's going on? They're, they're having lunch. They're hungry. I've actually seen this exact scenario play out. So it is a continuous, non-stop fire hose level feed of nosiness and fear. We have a very bad addiction to fear right now. And that has to go away. There have always been problems. My grandfather, okay, worked for the railroad, grew up in East Macomb. No, raised my mom in East Macomb anyway. My mom told the story, and he did, I heard him say it. When she was a little girl, 70, 75 years ago. Her dad, my grandfather, and all his buddies sat around talking about how Macomb was going down the tubes and used the nickname everybody else used for it, which was Little Chicago. Now, I keep hearing people using that now and starting to use it again, as if they've invented something. It was being called that literally 100 years ago. What has changed is not necessarily the level of bad stuff going on. Oh, we have more bad stuff going on. I'm not going to try to disassemble on that. We definitely have more crime. More, more, you know, thick-headed lunks running around thinking they can do whatever they want. We definitely do. But it's not to the extent that everyone is being led to believe it is by the teeming masses of rumor mongers and fear porn peddlers. That's not helping. It's not. And that's a part of the problem. Well, we deserve to be informed. Why? What you gonna do with the information? If something bad is happening in Tyler Town and, and you live in liberty, what's it gonna do to you? What does it matter to you specifically, personally? This goes back to what I say all the time. We need to go back. We have, we have a new president coming in, so hopefully gonna change a whole lot of stuff, who has been running for 10 years, 12 years, on the platform of making America great again. Going back to the times when America was at its greatest. One of the components of those times was people minding their own business. The internet and social media have made it far too easy for everyone to say anything to everyone at all times, 24/7, and get an audience for it. That's not helpful. Again, as evidence, wave my hands around again. So try to remember that some of the enormous uptick in crime is confirmation bias. When you are getting many more reports of things, some of which turn out to be nothing, but you never hear about that part. You never hear, for example, the one I was just talking about, 10-plus automatic shots fired. What's going on? You don't get the report when it comes back later and it was some guy shooting cans in a field. Oh, no, you're not going to hear that. You're not going to get that update. And even if you do, you're immediately going to have two dozen people going, oh, Lord have mercy on us, our poor, so, no. If you want to run around and get all excited when you think things are horrible, you have to acknowledge when it turns out they weren't as bad as you thought. We never get those updates. We never hear about that. That is never brought up. Why? Because of the addiction to fear porn. No one is addicted to information. Everyone is addicted to being in the know and being terrified. And again, I will stand by this opinion. It is not productive. It's not helpful. Do we have problems? Oh, you bet. Are they worse than they were 30, 35 years ago? Most definitely. Are they as much worse as they were 35 years ago as we think they are? No. You just didn't hear about it before. It's kind of like if you get termites in your house. Got termites in my house one time years ago. And then they're, they're munching away. They're having the time of their life. And it wasn't until holes started appearing in the floor that anyone realized there was a problem going on and had to get it checked out. The problem was always there. The termites were always there gnawing away at the wood. We had a problem from day one, and it was a bad problem that led to a worse problem. did the problem only appear when somebody pointed it out? When somebody recognized it? We had termites in the wood, but there were no holes in the floor back 20, 30 years ago. Because social media hadn't took off. The internet was not what it is now. And you didn't hear about it. You didn't know the termites were in there. So you went about your business. You made some popcorn and watched a movie with the kids, had a great time. Why? Everything's pretty good. No, everything's collapsing. You just don't know about it. When it starts collapsing, you don't go, oh, this just happened today. No. And it's disingenuous at best to believe it, it did. Now, before anyone responds to this by saying, well, yes, but if we had noticed at the very beginning, something could have been done. Again, let me wave my hands around in the air for the third and final time this morning. Everybody knows now, things improving? Is it helping? Is it making anything better in Pike County? You've seen improvements. If so, what's everyone complaining about? If you haven't, well, the answer to the problem wasn't everyone knowing everything everybody does 24/7, 365. We need to come up with a different approach. I told you, I woke up in a good mood. I don't know what happened. I walked in the studio door and my brain went, and here we are. We will continue on a Tuesday morning, a gorgeous Tuesday morning, December 3rd, Alien Invasion Day, which admittedly will dissolve everything, right? If General Meep Moot of the planet Gorbel Stomp lands on the White House lawn and says, yeah, we're taking over. It's gonna be a non-zero amount of people that are gonna go, oh, thank Take us to your leader. Well, it's come back in about a month and a half because right now it's just gonna be embarrassing. Our leader's in Africa. He doesn't know it, I'm sure, but he's in Africa. So can you come back later? Thanks. Trump would walk out and buy the flying saucer. Turn it into a profit center for the American government. Selling rides. We continue on this Tuesday morning right after this. Keep it good.
Feeling fancy? Feeling festive? You can do both this Thursday at Selman's Jewelers. Come see a showcase of pre-owned high-end watches, including pre-owned Rolexes, taste high-end bourbons, and make holiday wish lists. We can't wait to see you this Thursday from 5 to 8. Selman's Jewelers, 1311 Delaware Avenue, Macomb. Your family-owned and operated jewelry store since 1945.
Weekday mornings at 6 after 9 on 93.5 FM, or you can catch up anytime by going to
Welcome back. Supertalk, Mississippi Pike County. 93.5. No matter what else happens, at least we're getting rid of those oak trees on the interstate. Thank goodness. Positive change, he said with a heavy sarcastic tone in his voice. All right. I don't know if you heard about this. You remember Enron, right? Based over in Texas, basically responsible for a lot of problems. They, they were the first domino that led to the financial collapse back in 2008. Well, Enron is back. They, they have resurfaced. Sort of. Let me explain. They resurfaced. They have advertising out. They have TV commercials. They have promotional videos. They have posters. They have graphics. One of them is a large crowd of people standing in a field forming the Enron logo, and over it, it just says, we're back. Some of the ad copy, in the modern world, you must accept change is the only constant. Learn how to adapt. Forgive. And you're thinking, okay, what the heck is going on here? I'll tell you what's going on here. It's a fake, sort of, but not really. Right now, the entire thing has been whipped up to sell Enron t-shirts and hats. There is a company in Arkansas called The College Company. That's the name of the LLC. In 2020, they bought the trademark for Enron for, get this, $275. And now they've started all of this promotional stuff, selling t-shirts. The theory is they're gonna launch some kind of cryptocurrency to try to make a buck off of this. So when you see the stories, when you hear about the return of Enron, not really. I, I would just like to point out that The College Company is someone that Rhino is very familiar with. The College Company The College Company created from scratch, the Birds Aren't Real Conspiracy Theory. That's the one you've heard Rhino, Rhino and I have talked about it, but you've heard him talk about it many times. Uh, that theory suggests that all birds are drones created by the government to use for surveillance. When they land on a light wire, yeah, they're, they're not resting, they're recharging. They have sold a ton of Birds Aren't Real t-shirts. Same company. Same basic concept. So the same people that came up with Birds Aren't Real are now relaunching Enron? In order to sell t-shirts? And possibly a cryptocurrency. Why not? Now, having said all that, I hate to pick at an open wound. I hate to touch what could still be a raw nerve. Uh, has anybody checked to see if the trademark for WorldCom is available? Because to me, those two are kind of tied together in my mind for whatever reason. They had nothing to do with one another, really, but they, they just, they're, they're in one particular bucket inside my brain, Enron and WorldCom. Is that trademark available? Better question. If it is? Would you buy a t-shirt? Just asking. Just asking questions here. Practicing to be an elected official, obviously. I'm just asking questions. If a zebra runs in form in front of a barcode scanner, is it gonna ring up as a big purchase or a coupon? I'm just asking questions here. It doesn't mean the questions aren't stupid. Always remember when somebody says that? There's a whole other side to it. Final break. You'll be just as relieved as I am to realize, we're gonna close this down right after this.
Feeling fancy? Feeling festive? You can do both this Thursday at Selman's Jewelers. Come see a showcase of pre-owned high-end watches, including pre-owned Rolexes, taste high-end bourbons, and make holiday wish list. We can't wait to see you this Thursday from 5 to 8. Selman's Jewelers, 1311 Delaware Avenue, Macomb. Your family-owned and operated jewelry store since 1945.
One final piece of breaking news you may not have heard of. Remember the hoopla over the last week or two about Jaguar? Yeah, that whole rebrand was for a couple of concept cars they're not producing and are never planning to sell. Genius level activity going on here. Have a good day. Be careful. Pour one out for the oak trees and we'll do this again tomorrow morning at 9:06. My friend? I'll see you then.